Okay, we're gonna call this hot July meeting to order. Thank you for all the staff that are here with us tonight in short sleeves. And thank you for audience for being here as well. So we'll start with our roll call and Clerk Gorham, if you could do that, please. Thank you.
My pleasure Chair. I am present. Member Kirby.
Here.
Chair Loeffler-Kemp.
Here.
Member Lowfald.
Here.
Member Oswald.
Right here.
Member Sandsted.
Here.
Member Trinkas excused. Superintendent Gronseth.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Horton.
Couldn't hear him. He's in a suit.
Here in a suit. Deputy Clerk Erickson. Secretary Dolan's. Secretary Tebow. Excused. All right, student reps. Emma Natale. And Vanessa Farrell. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you Clerk Gorham, and I have a feeling that he might get to us a little bit tonight. There seems to be a little humor up here. So, that's good. Okay, we're gonna start with a pledge allegiance. If everyone could stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Member Gorham. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Kirby. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries six zero. And then we'll go on to the approving the minutes, the regular school board meeting for June 18th, 2019. Can I have a motion, please? So moved by Member Lowfald. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Kirby. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving our regular school board meeting for June 18th, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries six zero. And then we had a special closed meeting on June 8th. Can I have a motion to approve the special closed meeting?
So moved.
So moved by Member Kirby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Gorham. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. So, today, we're gonna do something a little bit different for our community, school and community recognition. We, as we've heard in the last couple months, we have had many scholarship winners from our high school seniors. And so, this month, the Duluth School Board recognizes and honors those who establish and maintain local post-secondary scholarship opportunities. Through the generosity of Duluth citizens and organizations, our students are fortunate to have access to millions of dollars in local scholarships. Some are created in memory of distinguished Duluthians. A few examples include Robert Berquist, a renowned architect instrumental in many Duluth projects; Medal of Honor recipient and Denfeld alum Mike Calaleo; the Reverend Arthur Foid III; teacher Linda Sodestrom; coach Joseph W. McInnich; the Steve Rowland Youth Peacemaker Award; Robert B. and Sophia Whiteside; lifelong Duluth resident and East graduate Greg Irons; the Marshall H. and Nellie Elworth Scholarship, created by Central alum Marcia Marshall W. Elworth. So many scholarships also come from local organizations. And examples of those include the Clayton Jackson McGee Memorial Board, the Kiwanis Club of Friendly Duluth, Historic Central High School Museum Committee, Local American Legion Post, Harbor Town Rotary, Duluth Masonic Lodges, Duluth Building and Construction Trades Councils, Essentia Health Exilery, St. Luke's Volunteer Service Guild, Duluth Preservation Alliance, Duluth Credit Unions, Duluth Lions Clubs, Denfeld Central, and Duluth East High School Alumni, PEO Women's Philanthropic Organization, Men as Peacemakers. These are just a few. The Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation manages over sixty scholarships available to area students. Northland Scholarship Services coordinates over a dozen Greater Denfeld scholarships. So these, again, are mentioned as only a few examples. There are so many more. We extend our gratitude to all those in our community who organize, support, and present these amazing opportunities for Duluth students. We congratulate all students who worked hard to earn these scholarships and the teachers, the families, and staff who supported them in their effort to receive them. So that is our recognition. Yay. So as you're out there, maybe still attending graduation parties like I am, be checking with the students if they received any scholarships, be thanking people in the community that you know are a part of these organizations or a part of the families that have been so generous over the years for our students. So, that's exciting. Okay, the next part of our agenda is audience participation. Before we begin, Clerk Gorham, could you read the community vision and support for our schools?
I sure can. Thank you Chair. Community vision and priorities for Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth public schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include: pay attention, listen, be inclusive, don't gossip, show respect, be agreeable, apologize, give constructive criticism, take responsibility, be honest and care for others, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you Clerk Gorham. And then, during the public comment period, again, some reminders. Persons wishing to address the school board must sign in prior to the meeting listing their name, address, and the matter on which you will speak. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretaries located in the back of this room. Persons addressing the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Each person addressing the board will have three minutes. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak for more than three minutes. The clerk of the board, Clerk Gorham, will start the stoplight timer at the start of each person's time. A green light means go, a yellow light means to start wrapping up, and a red light means to stop. Persons addressing the board shall confine their comments to the matters pertaining to the agenda or to matters of administrative concern. So, let's see. Our first speaker is Kevin Square-Brown. Thank you.
I did that backwards. Superintendent Gronseth, school board members, my name is Kevin Square-Brown. I'm here tonight representing myself. During the July 9th Business Committee meeting, you discussed the recently passed budget. Several of you noted that generated comp ed is an inconsistent source of revenue. Between fiscal year nineteen and twenty, the number of district students signed up for free or reduced lunch dropped by three hundred and twenty-six, about seven percent. That resulted in a thirteen percent drop in comp ed revenue. As pointed out in your discussion, qualifying for free or reduced-priced lunch is a proxy for educational barriers. And moving from below the poverty line to a few hundred dollars above in a given year doesn't erase the underlying need. In light of this, no one has offered justification for using the reduction in generated comp ed rather than test scores, reading levels, and educational success to determine how well needs are being met. Add to that, the superintendent's acknowledgement repeated last week that if there wasn't a deficit, then all the buildings would have received the same resources as the previous year. The disproportionate cuts clearly seem to be based on formula, not need. Much time was spent last week telling one another how inclusive the process was. The superintendent reported the process was the most inclusive in ten years. He also reported that the equity process and equity tool was used. Step three of the T-Form reads, "How have representatives from these groups, those impacted by the decision, been collaboratively engaged in the decision?" Member Loeffler-Kemp claimed that the public was invited into crafting the budget. Superintendent Gronseth stated this as well in his Sunday op-ed. I've checked with the leaders of NAACP's Education Committee, the Education Equity Alliance, the Duluth Indigenous Commission, the American Indian Education Advisory Committee, and EAC. None, none, report being invited to give any input into the budget process. Member Lowfald noted that she spoke with many of the principals of the Western schools and they were essentially good with the budget cuts. In order for principals to give honest, critical feedback, there needs to be trust that doing so won't result in being targeted for reprimand. Can any of you honestly contend that climate exists? Member Lowfald asserted that this budget was indeed funding needs, not buildings. CFO Erickson qualified that claim by pointing out that there are more needs than resources, and everyone defines needs differently. That has been my concern from the beginning. With too few resources to meet all of the needs and wants, the basic needs of those not even making grade level take a backseat to the needs, sometimes really wants and desires, of students at or well above grade level. I stand by my critique that these cuts fail to reflect equity and are not need-based.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers that have signed up? Okay, I don't think there was. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is communications, and there were no communications this month. So we will move on now to the report of the superintendent and then reports from the school board reps. Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you. First note about this school board meeting and the streaming broadcast. Due to a technical change involving YouTube's G Suite for education, we're not, the YouTube channel is temporarily suspended. We're unable to provide a live feed of tonight's regular school board meeting, but we are working with YouTube and we hope to resume livestream in August. For people who are new to our community or new to the Duluth schools, we now have an online enrollment option, and that process is available on our website. Or, if people prefer, they can come to the assistant superintendent's office here in the district building. And either way, we're excited to welcome you to the Duluth schools. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know that there's been about twenty-five or thirty students who have used the online process so far this summer since it's been up, so we're glad to make that available. Also, if you've been out in the buildings, you've seen our maintenance crew hard at work getting schools ready for the upcoming school year. I've seen floors being scrubbed and waxed and a lot of projects being done around the district. I want to thank them for everything that they do and to make sure that our schools are looking their best. I know that when everyone comes back to school, they always comment on, "Oh, the floors are shining." So it's great to have a fresh start with a fresh school year. So we thank them for all their time and efforts. We also have staff doing a lot of work with new textbooks and making sure that we have enough books in all of our buildings and that all the materials are where they need to be for summer as well. Speaking of school district staff, I want to let people know that there are still many opportunities available to work with Duluth public schools. You can check our website if you're interested in working in schools in a variety of roles. So there are many positions that people don't always think about when they're looking for a job, especially with the school district. And of course, we have teachers and paraprofessionals and principal positions, but we also have clerical and bus drivers and food service and maintenance and accountants and so many other roles that are available. So I hope people will go to our website and check out, the opportunities are there. There's some pretty exciting opportunities available. And then I just wanted to share another reminder that summer meals are still in full swing. They started back in June, they've run through August 23rd. Breakfast is available from eight to 10:30. Lunch is available from 11:30 to 1:00. And that's at Myers-Wilkins Elementary, Piedmont Elementary, Lower MacArthur Elementary, Middle Park Middle, huh, Middle Park, Lincoln Park Middle School, Stowe Elementary, and Lowell Elementary. And it doesn't have to be the school that's in your neighborhood, just whatever's closest to you or the school that you go to, the school that's closest to you, or wherever you happen to be is just fine. And that is free-for-all students eighteen and under, and there is a small fee for adults who are joining the children. So that is the very quick superintendent report on this very warm day, and I will defer to our students for their reports. And why don't we start with Emma Natale to begin with this month.
There hasn't been too much going on, just a lot of relaxation and preparing for the upcoming school year. Our fall sports have started, some of their captains practices. And then also this weekend, there's going to be a Gesigumi offseason robotics tournament held at East, but a lot of the local robotics teams are going, and it's kind of like just a fun tournament to get all the teams in the local area to get to know each other more. So that's going on. Feel free to come to that. It's very chill and interactive. That's pretty much all.
Well, so far, not a lot has happened since we haven't been at school, but we're starting to prepare for the upcoming school year. So we've been putting together welcome bags for new students. And also Jump Start is coming up, where freshmen are given a tour of the school and meet new people, each other hound pack leaders. So that's fun for them. And also, clubs and activities at East will be there. I'll be there with the debate team. And clubs and activities will be there to show the freshmen what East has to offer, and it'll be very fun.
Okay, thank you so much Vanessa and Emma. And I, you know, I think I said this last month too, but I know our students are out there doing a lot in the community in lots of different ways, whether they have summer jobs, whether they're doing volunteer work, or whether they're gearing up for the sports practices they may be involved with or music lessons. So we appreciate you both being here tonight as well and doing your volunteer service even in July. So, thank you so much. Thank you Superintendent as well for your report. We're gonna jump in now to our committee meetings and, oh, excuse me. The other item on the agenda is just our schedule of a meeting and events, and I just want to remind board members that next Monday, the 22nd, at 4:30 up on the third floor, we will be having our Minnesota School Board Association Superintendent Search Training. So, 4:30 on Monday. Then we'll move on now to our standing committees, and we'll begin with Member Lowfald with the Education Committee, which was held last week.
As my team comes forward, I just want to be thankful that even though we're not livestreaming tonight, and so this might not be on YouTube, if you go back to last week's YouTube, you will get a good background in both our education, our human resource, our business committee meetings. And so I can be assured that what I share tonight is actually gonna be available if they watch the committee meetings that we had. So thank you. So thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for coming out to watch a school board and to help us give direction and understanding. So last Monday, we had our educational committee meeting, and we have a lot of the items that are kind of traditional in our meetings. So we always start with informational items. Assistant Superintendent Horton's report and Curriculum Director Gail Netland's report. The purpose of both of their reports is always to give us regular updates as board members to educational teaching and learning opportunities. We thanked Director Netland for highlighting professional development opportunities for our staff, and we just appreciate their reports. We have shout-outs, we have, you know, some reminders of things going on, and so we appreciate the two reports from Director Netland and Assistant Superintendent Horton. And as board members, I just remind you that their reports are, one, detailed in our minutes and also just informational items for us. Next on our English, or English, did I say English? Education, Education Committee meeting. It was informational presentations by our Climate Coordinator Ron Lake, along with Assistant Superintendent Jeff Horton, just updating us and presenting a report on the number of online complaints of bullying and incidences documented as bullying in our infinite campus. And it's recommended that we receive that report from Ron Lake as informational. Ron Lake continued with us and gave a report on OSS incidences in the 2018-2019 school year, and again, that's recommended for our receiving this report as informational. We continued working with Assistant Superintendent Jeff Horton and Ron Lake as they overviewed our Family and Student Handbook, of which we read, gave some feedback. Assistant Superintendent Horton emailed us the, you know, kind of the revised copy, ninety-one pages handbook for us to just understand as our district follows. The Family and Student Handbook Committee is made up of assistant principals and district administrators, including Assistant Superintendent Horton, Committee Chair Rachel Jackson, Mike Emerson, Jake Hinsela, John Flah, Kyle Rock, Tom Tuscan, Marcia Nelson, Darren Sheldon, Ron Lake, and Bill Howes. So it's Regulation 5085, the Family and Student Handbook for our information. We went on to look at three grant applications. The Minnesota Department of Education McKinney-Vento Homeless Children and Youth Education Grant. I'm really looking forward to seeing if that grant gets received. It's for forty thousand dollars, targeted to help our homeless children and youth education. So that's recommended as informational. Also, a grant from the Lloyd K. Johnson Foundation, two thousand dollars, not just for Duluth East, but it is for Duluth East and Duluth Denfeld. It is an initiative by our activities directors to educate all coaching and all activities in both high schools in a three-D dimensional coaching curriculum. So that's an exciting addition as well. And our third grant submission, just for our information, is Northland Foundation Grant Application from Jen Jaros and Early Childhood Family Education for five thousand dollars for infant mental health consultation. So those are recommended as just for our information. Action items that we went over in our committee last week, these are for second reading. So with the approval of the Education Committee report, we will delete Policy 6109, which is our Duluth Public Schools' online learning policy. And it's recommended that we delete that policy and replace it with a new policy, 624, detailing much more specific information, much more direction for our online options and somewhat our ALC. What's the term used for their attendance? It's called?
Hybrid.
Hybrid. I got it. So it's recommended that with acceptance of the Education Committee that we are accepting New Policy 624. I will read now Resolution. It's Resolution E-7-19-3661, Acceptance of Grants. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465, Period 03, requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth public schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to the following organizations. And you can see that we have four grants to accept, and as we move forward with this policy or with this education report, we will then, nope, we're gonna vote on that right now. So I move Resolution E-7-19-3661.
Moved by Member Lowfald, seconded by Member Sandsted. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of Resolution E-7193661? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six zero.
And I'll just continue. We have two celebrations of graduates that are receiving their diplomas. So this month, in July, Jason Changathong and Paul William Pow are receiving diplomas from the ISD 709, the Duluth Public School. So it's recommended that we applaud them. Also, as part of the Education Committee report, we are approving the 2019- Also, as part of the Education Committee Report, we are approving the 2019 graduates from all of our buildings. We saw that in our Board Books, the listing of the programs from all the various graduation ceremonies. And it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the certified list of June 2019 graduates as submitted by the respective high schools. We have future items as policy updates. That concludes the Education Committee Report. So, I move acceptance of the Education Committee Report.
Okay, move by Member Lowfold, seconded by Member Sandsted. Is there any discussion? Member Oswald, okay. And Member Sandsted, did you also have discussion?
Yes.
Okay. We'll begin with Member Oswald, please.
I just wanted to, I had a question about the Family and Student Handbook. The attachment of the Family and Student Handbook says "draft" after it. So, are we actually approving the draft in the resolution, in the regulation? Or, and is the handbook gonna be changed after this, or should draft not be on there?
Where are you seeing draft?
Okay, go ahead, Member Oswald.
It's under D1 on the link itself. It says 2019-20 Family and Student Handbook-Draft.
It is, no, this will be, this will be the copy that is sent out to families. So, no, it should not read "draft." We will make that change. Thank you for noticing.
I just wanna make a comment on the handbook that, this was mentioned in our committee meeting. But the handbook, again, will be mailed, as it has been in the past, to families. It will also be online. And as a parent, I encourage families to read through that when you get it and ask questions along the way. Member Sandsted?
Yeah, I wanted to say I appreciate the changes that were made on the dress code that I had pointed out. I wonder if you could just speak to, I know a year ago when we talked, I think we had a meeting that involved discussion on the dress code. And there was gonna be some input from students perhaps, as well as staff and family. And I wonder if you would just sort of speak to who was involved in making the changes to the dress code. So, everyone?
Yep. The Dress Code Regulation was largely written by our Assistant Principals, and so they worked through their sites. Ray Jackson, who chaired the committee, was kind of took point on that project. And so they worked with their sites to gather input. As to the level of student input, I would say that anecdotally, they received information. I'm not aware of any groups or committees that met to inform the regulation. But I'd also like to add that I think that student input is very important in this process and student buy-in is very important in this process. And so I appreciate your question and think that we should be looking at ways to get student input when it comes to regulations like this.
Thank you. Member Oswald and then Member Lowfold will be next.
I just wanna comment that when these situations occur, we have two wonderfully capable student reps on our board that can provide an amazing amount of feedback and can reach to their student populations and bring that back. And so I would hope that we think about using them in different ways than we have in the past in the future, especially when it comes to things that affect students.
Yep, I would agree. I would welcome engaging students in that process. I think through our, through different student organizations, through the two of you, I think that'd be absolutely wonderful to engage you in those processes.
Member Lowfold?
I'd just like to pull C1. And it was our, kind of our first report by Ron Lake and just, you know, kind of thank Ron. I've, I know he has spearheaded our district's, what is his title, Safe and Welcoming? No?
District Climate Coordinator.
Climate Coordinator. And I just really appreciate his coming back and giving us, I think we had a really good conversation with Ron last week. And just some of the things I thought that came across in that is that, you know, bullying, I think, is a topic we hear out in our community a lot. And it's something that school board members often get a parent inquiry. And so I think it's really great that Ron has a long history in our district and has tackled the whole bullying and reporting and working through our sites really well. I asked him what he thought our district did well. And just for our public, I want, I want you to know that, you know, we work really hard to do what we can to lift up our students and to make them successful. And if bullying has happened, we want to address it. So, he knew that relationships between students and students, you know, need to happen. Relationships between students and adults in the building need to, and he thinks we do this well. He thinks that the sources of strength that are happening now at our high schools are also a good initiative. They're fairly new, and I'm sure our student reps are working with those as well. He thought that we are doing a good job of identifying our expectations, allowing a process, and having good organization. And he really challenged us, and we had good conversation on what we, could we improve? And that was to get out into our community, the, how a parent or how students would go on online and give us the data and make the report on bullying so it can be addressed by the school sites. It can have some resolution. And I think then our community will know that we take those instances seriously. So, that was just some highlights I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Lowfold, for expanding on that report, 'cause it was a pretty thorough report that Ron Lake had done. Member Sandsted?
Thank you. I wanted to speak to the other presentation by our Climate Coordinator, Mr. Lake, about out-of-school suspensions. And we did see some progress there in terms of numbers and the overall reduced days that students were kept out of school for a variety of issues. And he went in-depth on that. Member Oswald observed that the percentage of days that were spent out of school, in out-of-school suspension by our black students, is growing. Not the number of days, but the percentage. And looking back, it was at about 26% two years ago, 27% last year, and now it's at 33%. And so while we're doing overall a good job reducing the number of days, it's disproportionately improving for students who are not our black students and not improving at all for our black students. And so I think it's really important for us as a board to recognize both the places we are making progress and also the areas where we need to focus, especially when we have limited authority to have an impact and when we can see a particular need that needs addressing. I hope we continue to highlight that and focus on some accountability around those issues.
Member Lowfold?
Thanks, Member Sandsted. You're right that, you know, I was hoping that someone else would bring up that other side of Ron's report. And I think it's interesting, as you asked him, you know, well, what are we doing? Are we placing more resources? Can we place more resources? I think he shared with us some programs going on at some of our middle schools, which is, I think, where he said the increase was. And so I would continue to want to give feedback to our administration that we would like to see a report, again, about the programming. What are we using the money then to target so that we can, you know, work with that population as well? So, thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I very much agree with those. While we're doing a great job, or doing a better job in some areas, we still have a lot of work to do. One thing that we started doing this past year was adding, when going through our Comprehensive Needs Assessment, we started, we incorporated looking at that Minnesota Department of Human Rights work. And then in terms of the goal-setting, those who are seeing disproportionate numbers, setting goals within the school improvement plans in order to be tracking that information and really engaging the CITs in that process. Also, on our agenda tonight, you'll notice that we do have some funding. We were awarded $10,000 for T implementation. So, we'll be working on training CIT members on the use of the T. And we're hopeful that that's, that great tool can be used to help support great conversations and gaining perspective on supporting students staying in school. So, thank you for your comments. Yes, we need to do a better job, and hopefully this will add some more of that accountability piece to it.
Thank you for adding that Assistant Superintendent. Member Gorham?
Yep, thank you, Member Sandsted, and Member Oswald, for bringing that important fact up. It just kind of struck me that we've paid a lot of attention to out-of-school suspensions, and we've made progress for some. And I appreciate the use of the tool for equity accountability being introduced at our sites. I would have to contemplate it a little bit more, and maybe we can discuss it next Education Committee. But due to the fact that this is impacting a particular population of students, is it worth taking an in-depth focus on that in the next year and maybe looking at some external community partnerships to really dive deep into that? Because I know everyone in this room would like to see it change. And I think that might be what it would take. So, I would welcome that conversation next month, as well as other ideas and things that I may be forgetting about on the spot here.
Superintendent Brunson?
Thank you for that. This is an important topic for us. It has been one of our goals to reduce our out-of-school suspension, especially the disproportionality of it. And it is something that our continuous improvement teams, when they do a Comprehensive Needs Assessment, as the Assistant Superintendent commented, is some of the data that they're looking at. And the data is different for each school. The percentages can't always tell us, what numbers can. And some of the reports that we share at the district level, we looked a little deeper at the site level. And those, as we mentioned before, we can't share those all publicly because some of the cell-size numbers are too small. So, students have maybe identified by that data. But we do use that data at the building level and are really narrowing in on why this is happening and look at different kinds of professional development that we can make available or supports for families and students that we can make available to continue to make progress on this. So, it is something that we will continue to work on.
Great, good discussion. Any additional comments on this topic? Okay. Going back to the Education Committee, was there any other discussion on any other items? Okay. Okay, the Education Committee then was moved by Member Lowfold, seconded by Member Sandsted. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Education Committee passes. We'll move on with Member Kirby to the Human Resource Report. Thank you again, staff.
Okay, thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on July 16th. And as is usually the case, we went over the staffing report, which was, had a lot of summer school. And it seems like our residential sites had some increases, at least over the summer. But there was nothing else that was of concern. We have, excuse me, we have a couple of resolutions. One is for the employment of a school board member by the district. However, according to state statute, all board members have to be present in order to vote on that. And so Resolution HR 719360 should be definitely postponed until next meeting when all members are present, according to state statute.
Aye.
Okay, so I move that we postpone, definitely postpone until next month, HR 719360.
Okay. I can take the head to the floor on that. Just a check here. Okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Gorham. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor of moving it to the August meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries six-zero. You can go on, Member Kirby.
Okay, thank you. Next, we had the first reading for a revision of Policy 103, Complaints by Students, Employees, Parents, and Other Persons. This, again, was the first reading, and it outlined the grievance procedure for complaints. Procedure is spelled wrong, but that can be handled later. And I believe this was, as I remember, following NSBA policy and the Department of Human Rights. So, that was the first reading, and that will be discussed for the next month. And finally, we had an informational item, again, from, this was from Tim Swirsky, Committee Reports on Referrals for Harassment During the Past School Year. And these were harassment reported in Infinite Campus. Do you want to speak to that briefly?
I just didn't want you to overlook the revised Policy 401.
Okay. Revised Policy 401 is, again, the first reading, equal employment opportunity. And I believe the only change is that two specific individuals and positions are named in the policy. So, that, again, is the first reading. And then we had a report on incidents of harassment through the Infinite Campus. And postponed for yet another month, the nepotism discussion. So, I move that we accept the Human Resources Committee Report.
Okay, move by Member Kirby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lowfold. Is there any discussion on any items? Okay. We had a lot of discussion on some of the first readings at the committee meeting. Okay, all in favor of the HR Committee? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six-zero. Thank you, Member Kirby. Thank you, staff. Okay, we're gonna move now to the Business Committee. And Member Oswald is filling in for Members Trinka. So, Member Oswald, you can begin. Thank you. We'll wait for staff to come up.
Thank you, Chair Lofler Kemp. The business portion of our committee meetings on Tuesday was held, and we had great discussions about our money and policies and regulations. So, getting right into it, we talked, we had a presentation about our insurance, and we'll talk about that when it comes up later in a resolution. And then we had a nice discussion- we'll talk about that when it comes up later in a resolution. And then, we had a nice discussion about the Mr. Square Brown's editorial in the paper, and, and how the district views the response. And that editorial was published in the paper by our superintendent. And I'm glad to see Mr. Square Brown here tonight to continue that conversation. I think we're having a very respectful dialogue, and I think it's, it's been advantageous to everyone involved. The only highlight of, of the numbers portion of our financial report is about our enrollment is pretty steady, and in fact, up a couple kids. So, that is exciting. And that's just a snapshot of the month. It may, may or may not hold in the future. But for this little snapshot, it's, it's looking good. And I like that momentum. Then, we had some fundraisers, just one to talk about at, at, I've been logged out of Board Book, and now have to log back in.
What's the part?
At Lester Park. They had some yearbooks for sale and earned some money off of that. So, that's great. We had no bids, no RFPs, no quotes. We were on to policies and regulations. We introduced two new policies surrounding expense reimbursement and the regulation on how to claim reimbursement for expenses. And we're going to look at deleting two different policies for mileage reimbursement. Policy 412 is what we're trying to replace it with, with Regulation 412R, and deleting 3135 and 3136. It's in its first reading, so we'll talk about that more next month. Contracts, change orders, and leases. We have the commercial insurance premiums and policies that we have to renew every year. And we had a nice discussion with our agency, Marshawn McLennan. The document on here that we're approving today may change just slightly in numbers, but not anything materially significant. So, we're looking to pass that tonight. The other contract is with University of Minnesota Duluth, providing us with college and the schools credits for our kids. And that contract will cost an estimated $56,000 to get our students some college credits. There are no, well, there's a placeholder for other contracts. I don't think there are any. Nobody's told me. And there are no change orders. So, then we can move on to leases. Leases, we're going to be leasing some buses for, on a three-year time span, for a cost of $186,636. Leasing will be advantageous to us because we can get them now. And, you know, it's, it's lease-to-buy, I believe, is what we had talked about. So, it's not that we're just throwing money out the window. We're also going to be leasing some custodial equipment from Hilliard on a three-year, 0% interest lease-to-own program. And we can buy that material for a dollar at the end. I think that sounds like a good deal. Anything for a dollar is good. Well, maybe not, but depending on what it is. Everybody's been to the dollar store, so I understand. Some things are good, some things aren't. But we have a lease. And I'm hoping that our, our maintenance staff find this very useful, to be able to clean more and do more things on our buildings than they have been previously. And that lease is going to cost $238,113.97. The third lease we have is about Merrick Creek, Creek Academy and Northwoods leasing the services for Merrick Creek Academy. And that three-year agreement will be, annually cost them $103,805. After that, we have the, the resolutions to go over. So, I'll begin by moving the resolution for donations of Resolution B-7-19-3662, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now, there be resolved that the Duluth Schools does accept the below-described donations from set organizations in accordance with the terms set forth year in, be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And we have a lot of, of donors from the community donating a lot of in-kind things and money towards our different schools. So, I move Resolution B-7-19-3662.
I can second. So, once in a while, I like to do it, just to keep you guys awake. Okay, so Resolution B-7193662 has been moved by Member Oswald, seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution carries. And thank you again for all the donations. You can continue, Member Oswald. Thank you.
All right, the next one we have is a resolution authorizing bank account signers to be removed from certain bank accounts that we have. As it opens up, I can tell you that Resolution B-7-19-3663 authorized bank account signer for July 2019, resolved by the School Board of Independent School Districts Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that hereby authorizes the following. Denise Clermont is now removed, and Barbara Switzer is now removed from bank accounts that we have holdings in for their respective positions. So, I move Resolution B-7-19-3663.
Moved by Member Oswald. Can I have a second? Seconded by Member Lowfold. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of B-7193663, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all in favor, say aye. I said that already? Okay. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, go ahead. Member Oswald, and I just want to make a note that the next resolution, we will be doing a roll call vote. Thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to add, I forgot Brenda Vatower was on there too. So, since she has moved on to other employment. Now, next is in relation to our 10-year capital facilities plan. We had a very nice discussion about the fiscal year 2021 update portion of that, which is exactly the one year in our 10-year plan that we actually are approving by this resolution. There were many comments made about our final numbers and the numbers to fix various properties that we own. The total 10-year long-term facility plan project expenditures is $75 million, $80,000, and $93. Yeah, I, I said that right, I'm sure. 75,080093. That's that number. And which is, you know, roughly $39 million more than we generate. So, we know that there's definitely some decisions to be made within that budget. So, I am going to go on to move Resolution B-7-19-3664, which is approving the 10-year capital facilities plan fiscal year 2021 update, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the 10-year capital facilities plan fiscal year 21 update is approved. I move Resolution B-7-19-3664.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Member Oswald. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Kirby. Do we have any discussion? Okay, is that a light on for discussion, Member Oswald, or?
It's just, thank you.
Okay, just because I haven't shut it off. Okay. So, all in favor of? Yes. It's a roll call vote. Thank you again, Clerk Goram. So, you can begin.
Good. I vote yes in support. Member Kirby?
Yes.
Sheriff Lefler Kemp?
Yes.
Member Lowfold?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
Member Sandsted?
Yes.
All right, the resolution passes 6-0, Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, next we have expenditure contracts, extension and renewal contracts, no-cost contracts, and revenue contracts, of which we've all reviewed and didn't have any questions about. And so, we have no change orders signed. We did receive the facilities report yet again from, from Mr. Spooner, and appreciate all the work that he and his department are doing. Then, we have a property sale update. But I wasn't sure. I thought we had talked about having a purchase agreement tonight, and we're not going to have that. Perfect. Less for us to do.
Go ahead, Mr. Gronseth.
No, I had mentioned that, and I, I thought that's what was in this place. But we're waiting on this report. So, we already have the purchase agreement for Hartley, and the board acted on that, and so it didn't have to act again.
Thank you. Go ahead, Member Oswald.
All right, finally, we have annual grants and donation summary that shows that, that we have about the same amount of grants that we've been getting most other years. And we have future items to talk about, our bus fleet, and our Homecroft Field that's, that's soggy in the rain, I imagine. The School Board election resolutions for election judges and polling places, along with policy updates. And that concludes the business agenda. So, I move the Business Committee Report.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Member Oswald, seconded by Member Goram. Is there any discussion on items, Member Sandsted? Do you have a item you want to pull?
Yes.
Okay, what item is that? I'm sorry.
2C.
Is there any other items, board members? Okay. Member Sandsted?
Okay, I'm not really speaking to the budget revision so much as the budget discussion that I listened to. And I really appreciated everybody contributing and the thoughtfulness that went into the discussion. I had somewhat of a similar reaction as Mr. Square Brown did in listening to the discussion, in that this was probably the best, I'm sure, it was the best budget process in my time here, and probably it has been in the last decade or more. And that's a great thing. But it wasn't perfect, and there are areas to improve. And I think that if we don't acknowledge that, then we're not doing our jobs. And I, in particular, the use of the term inclusive, that how inclusive our budget was just really got my hackles up. Because to me, the word inclusive means that you reached out to a variety of people and a variety of interest groups. And the term was being used to say, we included all of the district site leadership in the budget. And that should be a minimum. That's not a high-achieving, well-community-based budget. That's, that's kind of the minimum. And so, to say we have an inclusive budget means that we do need to reach out to EAC and to the Indigenous Commission and to the NAACP Education Committee and involve them. And when we're, in particular, focusing on a needs-based budget, I think we're all defining needs a little bit differently. And what the principal of Stowe Elementary might define as a need may be totally different than the need defined at Lincoln Park. But as a board member, I see our deep needs being those where we're having a hard time with our out-of-school suspension rate for Black students in particular, with our graduation rate for Black students and Indigenous students. And I see those as deep needs that weren't really a part of this budget in any particular way. And so, when we're talking about how we're spending our money directed at our needs, the energy we put forth is going to reflect the outcome we get. And so, if we're putting money towards the same thing that we've already put money for, forward to, if the budget is going to be the same as it was last year, we shouldn't expect any different results. And I'm not okay with not expecting any different results. I want to see some changes when it comes to, in particular, those statistics that we've talked about. So, I think next year, we should continue on improving our budget process. And it's, it's tricky, I know, because of the timing and because we don't have data until the last month that's really firm. But we need to be having broader discussions. And that's on the board, it's on administration. And so, I want us to be real cautious in patting ourselves on the back and saying that we did an excellent job this time. Because I don't know that the numbers would have come out any differently on a building-by-building distribution, had it been more inclusive. But I think that the community support and just in giving everybody behind the budget would have been, would have gone a lot better if we had had a broader process that was actually inclusive. And so, I wanted to share that because I wasn't able to be at the meeting.
Thank you, Member Sandsted. Member Lowfold?
So, I couldn't agree with you more, Member Sandsted. I really love that you challenged. I don't think any of us talked about it meaningfully, thinking, although I, I understand, sometimes my language especially can be, you know, really to focus on that positive. And that's what you're going to hear again from me, but please don't misread it, that I don't take your comments seriously. And we'll continue, when you're not with us next year, to push for that. And I'll work with our people who keep pushing us. But I also think my voice has got to be heard on this board at times because I'm in the buildings. And, and a lot of the people I see at times don't, aren't in the buildings. So, I felt comfortable when I got information from CFO Erickson and, and the leadership here, Superintendent Gronseth, that, that if we could maintain programs, like if you're at Denfeld or at Lincoln Park, and you see that they're doing a care academy, you see that they are treating behavior and academic challenges with more staff connections, with more hallway visits or, or staff there. When, when I'm there, every, you know, every couple of days, in both Lincoln especially and Denfeld, I know that Check and Connect at Denfeld is making great progress. I know that our after-school dash programs really were robust from like October to about February or March. And then, I, I saw some, you know, some, some, some decline a little bit. But there was really, I felt, a lot of genuinely good programming going on. I don't think dollars always show us what the programs are. So, I get to see that. And I just feel like my voice too, just has to share with you that I, I understand and will listen to our challenging community people and do better to get and talk to leadership. But I felt like I did reach out to leadership in the Western communities. I said that last week. And they were, they, I want to correct Mr. Square Brown when he said that I made a comment about they were happy with the cuts. The principals weren't happy with the cuts. I guess I felt like they were happy with the process, that they felt that it was transparent, that they also felt that it was one of the best opportunities they had to work with a CFO and a superintendent that were listening. And so, that was what made the budget palatable for me to vote on. It wasn't because I thought that we were making, that our CIT teams, I, I know we have some, some work to do. And our, our leadership here, I feel, has given direction to the sites that say, we want it to be more inclusive. We gave you the, the direction that you wanted. You wanted to be able to meet your needs, and it's different. So, they gave that authority to our building, administrative, our building leaders. And, and we have to continue to push them to make sure that they're inviting more students and more community that they're involved in to the table for those conversations. But we're only, I think we're only two years in. This year, much more authentically than maybe last year. But we, we are two years into a, a community conversation that we've listened to them, tried to make some progress. We're still grappling, and we'll continue to challenge each other. But thank you. Thanks for listening to.
Member Goram?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment a little bit and recognize a couple of things. First of all, it is, it is the task of a board to, to push district leaders to push. You know, we, we push because we want to see results that we've talked about in campaigns and as we respond to people talking about what we're about. But I also know that our district leaders are about those things too. I, I know that because I get to talk with you, meet with you one-on-one. I know your hearts, they're good. I think what we have here, we've, we've, because I asked CFO Erickson early in the budgeting process, how do we include community members in this conversation, or how do we include students or families? how do we include, um, students or families receiving, attending our schools? And I think that's a difficult conversation. Why, we look at CFO Erickson, um, and our financial staff, they're one person who serves an entire district. Um, what I'm saying is, if we want a more inclusive budget process, I think we need to rely on our CIT teams to be able to have those conversations at their schools where they have relationships and connections with the students and the families that attend there, to, um, really have that authentic conversation about needs. Um, needs will look very different from school to school and among people. But, um, I think if we're looking at getting to the authentic answer as a large system, that's maybe the feasible way to do it. And I'm encouraged to hear that as we've made, I, I believe it was a resolution supporting use of the tool for equity accountability, that it's growing throughout our system. Now, that doesn't happen overnight. We'd like it to. I'd like it to. It's complicated, though. This is a ship. It doesn't turn quickly. Uh, I, I wish it could. Everyone here wishes it could. Um, but we have, I mean, I don't know how many principals and how many staff on these CIT teams to get trained, to get well-equipped to do this well. It takes time. Now, I know we don't have time because students are going to school right now and they're graduating tomorrow. Um, but I, I want to recognize that dynamic and how complex it is. And, um, let's be pragmatic about it and hopeful and I will continue to push, but also be supportive and understanding. Um, let's, can we challenge these, these sites to have those authentic conversations in their schools with parents? Um, I don't know how you do that, but that's the push. That's the need. Can we get there sooner than later? Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Member Gorham. Uh, Member Oswald?
Thank you. I just want to comment that I believe when we were talking about inclusivity, I was looking at it from a different point of view. I completely understand, um, the fact that it wasn't all inclusive. I thought we were just talking about inclusivity within the district, um, with the staff and the employees. That hasn't happened before. I fully agree that, that we need to work on the broader inclusivity, um, with, with, um, what's in the community. I love Member Gorham's suggestion of, of using CITs at their site base to engage with their parents. The problem is that parent engagement within each school looks vastly different, too. Some schools don't, uh, don't produce any parents. Some have overflows of parents and we, we can't control that. And so, it, it appears that many of the schools that struggle have lesser degrees of parent involvement. Whether that's true or not, I, I'm making a generalized statement and I, I acknowledge that. But it's harder to get engagement there. And if the people that are struggling the most that have the kids in that school that are struggling the most aren't going to show up to give that feedback, that's not going to work. Um, so there's got to be some structured way to, to reach out to those families, too. Um, and, but yet, I think this was a great building year that our district has showed that we can listen and we can, and hear what our employees have to say and work together to acknowledge the difficulties and what works best for everybody. And I think that's a great role model for, for building capacity in the future because a lot of our, our struggling populations and struggling families out in the community are, feel disengaged because they feel like they're often not heard and not listened to and, and have struggled. So, if we can, if they can look at us and say, this is what we're doing and, and we mean it. We mean we're, we're listening to you. We're working together. Um, you have value here. I, I think that's a great thing that we can build upon with our community and, and say that we have success in that. And that will attract more families to participate, knowing that we can do that. And I think we should, that's clear.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna have Superintendent Gronseth speak, but I'm just gonna jump in before you. That's okay. No, I, I just wanted to comment that at the committee meeting, we had a, a very lengthy, um, discussion and a, a lot of good listening was going on between everybody and a lot of sharing of thoughts. But that wasn't the only, uh, meeting where we've had some really good discussion on our budget, our budget process and on the range of issues around equity. I think one of the things I heard that we all knew when we voted in June is that because of the loss of comp ed funding, um, we, uh, there was going to be drastic reductions to all of our schools. And all of our schools took a hit as well. And, and we do need to kind of acknowledge that in this discussion as well, is that, um, all of our schools did take a hit and we have needs in all of our schools as well. Um, Member, or Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you. Um, thank you for having this, this discussion again. Um, it is, it is important and it's at the heart of everything that we're doing. Everything from budget to policy to curriculum to staffing to every conversation that we have is, is really centered on having as many of our students be as successful as they can. Um, and, and that is the work that we focus on every single day in everything that we do. Um, it is a process of, of change and it does take a while. And, and I appreciate the comments on that. Some of the things that we are doing, um, with our CITs, you know, that being a relatively new process, we're still in the, in the forming stages of that. For the coming year, uh, we are working with our principals to have parents on our CIT teams and we are encouraging, um, our principals to reach out and make sure that we have diversity present on our CITs. And that paired with the trainings that we plan to do with our tool for equity accountability with the CITs and then, um, using those CITs to make decisions. I, I do want to, um, make a clarification that when we talk about the, the numbers coming forward, that doesn't necessarily mean that the same staff in the same positions are in place. They may have changed their strategies. They may have changed their approach. We saw several buildings doing that, either adding different, um, interventionists based on the needs they saw or adding more mental health professionals or, um, added help with their OSS process because they saw that when, when students are coming back early, we need a way to intervene and to help them to grow and to work with families. And so, we did see many of our sites make changes with the staffing that did move forward. Um, with our CITs and their comprehensive needs assessments, they're really taking deep dives into their data. That also includes some perception data. So, we had CITs that were doing, uh, parent surveys. They were talking to students. They were getting feedback from the community. And that's how those needs were identified and then talking about best practices and, and how to, uh, address those. Having parents on those teams, um, in the future will help that to continue into the, how do we, how do we address those needs pieces. You know, this is, this is important work and I am so proud of the staff and our principals and our district leaders for engaging in this. Um, it's certainly not a new conversation of how to close the achievement gap and how to increase graduation rates. Certainly throughout my career in Duluth, my 23 years, this has been a conversation. Um, and I think that we're making progress. You know, that, I actually just, oh, and we had our legislative meeting, uh, yesterday, um, to talk about funding. How do we fund education differently so we can meet the needs of more students? And, uh, we've had conversations with the governor. I just, I wrote a letter to the governor, um, saying, you know, we've been having this conversation about equity and, and funding for education for a really long time. And having a teacher as governor and a teacher, uh, as commissioner of education, I know that we're going to have some meaningful conversations moving forward. We've been, um, really fortunate to have a local delegation of legislators that's focused on education. And I feel like we can make some progress. It's not always about money. Um, but when we've had to cut our transportation, our curriculum, our maintenance, our teaching staff, our, our extra support programs, our, our teacher coaches, we've cut so many things in the past five to 10 years. We need to add those supports back to be able to really make progress on this. And, um, sorry, I'll, I'll step off my soapbox here, but, um, I, I do believe that people are working hard on this issue and we will continue to and, um, hopefully continue to see more changes being made.
Go ahead, Member Lowfold.
I just wanted to come back to, and Superintendent Gronseth did probably a, a better job than I'm going to do. But I, I don't want to give the impression from my earlier comments that like somehow our CIT teams, you know, need to take the brunt of this. I sat on it. It used to be called Site Council and we've come such a far way to improving, um, how teachers lead their schools and work with their leadership. So, I, I want to shout out to the CIT teams. It's a fairly new thing. I know even the first month I was on the board and we were moving towards, um, CIT teams and giving them, um, control over what they thought their buildings needed. Um, my mind went back to my role as a site council teacher and how overwhelming it was not only to teach during the day and to do some advising after school and some, um, coaching, to also sit on a site team. And, you know, we're asking a lot of, a lot of our teaching staff and other staff, paras and custodial, uh, there's a place for, for all of them at the CIT table, but they're, that's also on top of their job. So, I, I just want to make sure that I value that, that I, I know the CIT teams continue to grow. I'm excited about the grant that Assistant Superintendent Horton, um, wrote to help with the, um, civility tool because that's going out to the CIT teams and that will help them come together, I think.
Equity.
Equity, equity tool. And so, I just wanted to go back to that comment. Thanks.
Go ahead, CFO Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you all for the comments and the feedback. I certainly, um, coming new to the district last October and, and, um, getting to learn the process and the history of the district, I think was, um, an indicator right away that this is a multi-year process for us to be looking at our budget, um, how that then correlates back to programs and services that we provide for our students and our community. Um, the budget challenges that this district has are very real. Um, I think that is part of the challenge that we have is that in past years, um, the district has been able to address certain issues because there were resources available, such as a fund balance, to help offset some of the needs and other crises that may have come up along the way. Um, the district is at a point now where we're really living within our means. We're living from paycheck to paycheck, um, payment from MDE, from payment from MDE until we can kind of right the ship. And I have, um, been so impressed with everyone that I have worked with, from school board members to, um, all the staff in the buildings and here in the district, um, just to be able to have that discussion, to say, we need to look at the best ways we can invest our time and our efforts to make sure that we can not just look at what's happening now, but what's going to be going into the future. Um, as we worked on this budget process, I know there were many times where I said, I'm already thinking about fiscal year '21 and we hadn't even finished fiscal year '19 yet. But that's kind of how our numbers nerdy brains work sometimes because we have to think beyond, a decision that can happen today can have many years' impacts into the future. So, we have to be thoughtful about all of those things as well. And, um, I think for this year, it was, we knew what we had. And we knew that if this budget could be stable and we could roll this in and that was the process, that was the message I shared since February. I can remember my first, uh, meeting with building administrators, um, and my question to them was, if you have what you have right now, can we make it to one more year so that we can start deciding how we're going to layer the budget process? Because we don't have more resources. All of our things are, are being put in there. But if you have the flexibility within your buildings, and I think many of you mentioned that tonight, that they've got that flexibility to address what the CITs were saying, address where they see needs that are different potentially next year than they are now. Um, can we do more? We have to do more. We definitely have opportunities to do lots of things. And, um, I feel really proud of the work that we did, but I know right away, I've got, if you come into my office and you see charts on the wall and things on my whiteboard, there are things to resolve lists all over my office. And so, it isn't that we championed anything and solved everything or finished everything. We just started a whole bunch of things. And I'm so, um, committed to working with all of you and, and this group of people here to do the best that we can to, to move forward and, and, and listen. And, um, to Member Gorham's point about the layering of, of people sharing information, I think that's where, from me, sitting in a room with a lot of people, those people hear from people and other people hear from people. And I hope that that's how we've gotten to some of the decision-making that we have. Um, are there more people that can be involved? Absolutely. But I think we see that, we see that through the processes and I appreciated that. That's kind of how I saw it as well, um, as we went through, um, this budget process. And, and certainly, um, I'm still learning a lot of the pieces of the budget. And I'm excited to share with you and, and how processes we can, we can use here to, um, try to find that fiscal stability. Um, I think beyond everything else, that's what can give this district that opportunity to keep moving forward and keep finding those ideas. Um, when you're making crisis decisions, oftentimes we aren't always thinking of what the effects are going to be. So, as we work towards that, I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that. And again, I just really truly appreciate the feedback and, and look forward to working every single day, um, on the budget and the processes that we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you, CFO Erickson. And just once again, thank you for all of your work in educating the public and the community and us as a board on, uh, school finance. Uh, Member Gorham?
Yeah, I just want to make one last quick comment that I think is really important. Um, it is our job as a school board to push. Um, I did read or hear somewhere, I can't remember where, but the, the tone of leadership in your organization, in your school district trickles down. And, um, if we didn't recognize all the change and work that's happened over the last few years and recognize that and celebrate that, I, I think, I, I can't imagine how that would impact morale. So, I, I want to, I want to recognize the positive changes and the steps we've taken and the progress we've made and all the people who've worked so hard. Um, I think that's hugely important and I, I encourage our board to do that. We push, but we also encourage, especially when we see the progress towards what we want to see. Um, it, it might never be good enough, but as we make progress, we should be celebrating that. So, I just really, um, want to honor and recognize all the folks. Probably a lot of them aren't here, won't hear this or know it, but I want them to. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gorham, for those very thoughtful comments. Okay. Any other comments on the, uh, business committee? I just want to comment on, on item, um, five C. It has to do with the Hoagland Bus Company. And what I just really wanted to note more is that Steve Johnson, our Director of Transportation, will be here next month, uh, for our committee meetings. So, uh, we will learn a lot about transportation and, um, uh, the work that Steve has been doing, uh, as, uh, for us this year. And I know for him as a transportation person, the next uh, few weeks are a pretty busy time. So, um, uh, just wanted to highlight that. So, we now have, um, the business committee moved by Member Oswald, seconded by Member Gorham. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the business committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, business committee passes, six zero. And then we have one other special resolution and, uh, okay. J- Member Gorham, if you could read- And, okay, Member Goram, if you could read that, please.
My pleasure, Chair. Authorizing school board members attendance at the Minnesota School Boards Association Summer Seminar, a great opportunity to learn more about being in the role as a school board member. Resolve that the Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the MSBA 2019 Summer Seminar. I move Resolution SP 7-193665.
Second. Moved by Member?
Moved by Member Goram, seconded by Member Oswald, or Sandsted. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Resolution SP 7193665 passes. Thank you. And before, Member Sandsted, do you have a comment? Did I accidentally turn your light on?
Yeah. I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah. I was wondering, Chair Loflerkamp, if you could let us know where things are at with the metacommittee, if we will get an update on that next month.
We will look at... Any other questions? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Motion by Sandsted.
Motion by Sandsted, seconded by Member Oswald. Any further discussion? Okay, I just want to add a couple of things as part of the discussion before we adjourn is, you know, I just want to thank again our staff who are continuing to work this summer. We have a lot of staff off, we have a lot of families off, we have a lot of parents off, but we also have a lot of staff that this is their busiest time. And so, want to thank you, and I hope that all of our staff, our students, our families, and all of us as well as board members enjoy the summertime as well. Many of us have been doing this important work for a long time, from our staff to board members to community members, and I guess I just want to make sure we remind ourselves to enjoy the summer as well. So, see you all next Monday, and we will adjourn. Thank you.